To all the spectators in the balcony, if you would like to participate in this council hearing, I am asking you to please tone it down. All the spectators in the balcony, if you will be participating in this council session, I'm asking you to please bring it down. This meeting is now come to order. I just want to say for the record, if you do not allow us to proceed, you will be removed from this council session. I just want to say it again for the record, if you do not allow us to proceed, you will be removed from this council session. This meeting is now come to order. session. We're asking for all attendees to please quiet down so we can conduct our council session. For the record, we're asking for all attendees to please quiet down so we can continue our council session. We're asking for everyone to please quiet down so we can conduct our council session. We ask for everyone to please quiet down so we can conduct our council session. I have to give fair warning, if you do not quiet down, you will be removed for disrupting the council session. I just want to say for the record, if you do not quiet down and you're disrupting the council session, you will be removed. I note that the hour has come and the quorum is present. This council session is now come into order. Be quiet down for a second. Could we respect the pastor, please, to give our invocation this morning? The chair recognizes Pastor Corey Johnson. Listen up, y'all, listen up. We understand there's a lot of energy going on today, pro and con, the Sixers' proposal. Could we respect the pastor as he gives invocation to start this council session?
Let's assume apostrophe prayer.
The chair recognizes Pastor Corey Johnson, pastor of the Seventh-day Adventist Church. One second, Pastor. Hey, sheriffs, hold up for a second, sheriffs. Hey, sheriff's team, hold up for a second. Hey, listen up to the organizers of the Save the Arena Coalition. I don't have a problem with y'all being here during this legislative process. All we're asking you to do, whether you're for or against, is just respect the process. Other than that, they gotta go. Now, we trying to be respectful, listen up, listen up. We don't have no problem with you staying in here. Sheriff, give me respect the pastor real quick. Let's see if they respect the pastor. Let the pastor do his prayer. Pastor Johnson, go ahead, sir. Pastor Johnson, go ahead, sir.
Let us pray. Almighty God, the Creator of all, we come before you with gratitude for the privilege of gathering to serve this great city of Philadelphia. As we convene for this final city council meeting, the year, we invite your presence to guide us in our deliberations and decisions. We thank you for our individual voices, for the liberty of conscience, the courage of our convictions, the freedom to disagree and dissent. We thank you for these demonstrations of democracy in action. We pray for wisdom for every leader seated here, that their minds and hearts may be attuned to your will and the needs of the people they serve. May they lead with integrity, fairness, and a commitment to justice. God of equity, we lift up our city's pursuit of true equality. Help us to tear down barriers that divide and to build bridges that unite. Let the policies crafted and enacted here reflect your heart for justice and compassion. We ask for your provision for those who are struggling economically. May this council's decisions create opportunities for flourishing and prosperity for every resident, especially those who have been historically overlooked and marginalized. God of compassion, remind us of your call to care for the least of these. May the work done here prioritize those who are the most vulnerable, our children, our seniors, our neighbors experiencing homelessness, the hungry and the poor. And finally, Lord, bless this council and all who labor for the good of the city of Philadelphia. Strengthen them to remain steadfast in their calling and united in their shared purpose. As we close this chapter and look forward to what lies ahead, may this city reflect your vision of justice, peace, and hope. While, Lord, there may not be uniformity on all things, may there be unity in all things. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. But before, one second before council at ease, before council at ease, we do recognize that there's a lot of passion on both sides of this issue, right? There will be a vote on this proposal that's before us. All I'm asking, we not trying to have people getting kicked out, we not trying to have people being arrested, all we're asking, right, is allow us to conduct the business of our council, of this legislative body. When a vote come up, you can boo, you can yell, you can say, "Hey, I'm happy," right? All we're asking, we not trying to get people kicked out, we not trying to get people arrested, but all we're asking, whether you're on the balcony or sitting on, or sitting inside the stands, we've been through this process, whether you support us or not, whether you support the vote or not, but we've had eight hearings, eight hearings, on this particular topic, and that some people disagree, that's okay, right? That's not gonna stop the vote today, to be quite frank with you, right? But we're asking, respect this legislative process, we will continue to work on addressing the issues that those feel that needs to be addressed, whether that's Chinatown or the surrounding communities that's being impacted by this particular proposal being put before us, but my, me and my team, this legislative body, have done our due diligence to be supportive of this process, rather than those who are supporting, as well as those who are very passionate that are against this proposal. But you cannot say we haven't given people the opportunity to express themselves, so all we're saying on this last legislative council session day, allow us to conduct our business. I don't want to see people getting arrested, I don't want to see people getting kicked out of here, but we do have a right to conduct our business that's here in this body. Those who represent you that's against this project, those who represent you that's for this project, they will speak on your behalf as representatives in this body. That's why you sent them here, and that's what they're responsible for doing while they're in this legislative process. So all we're asking is just respect our process and let us continue our business. That's all I'm asking. I don't want the sheriffs kicking people out, but in the event that you continue to disrupt, then we want to do what we have to do, and that's not our intention, that's not our intention. We've set from six to nine on several different nights, allowing more than 100-plus people come down here and express their opposition and support for this particular proposal. Eight particular hearings, and you have representatives that you sent here that have advocated on your behalf regarding this proposal, some of them things are in the final CBA, right? Whether you agree with them or not, no one can say we didn't listen to your issues and/or concerns, and so, all I'm asking respectfully, I do not want the sheriffs or the Philadelphia Police Department to put people out, but all I'm asking is just respect our legislative process. When a vote come, when a speech is come, you can yell, say, "Yay, I'm supportive," "boo," we hate it, but all we're asking respectfully, just allow us to go through the legislative process. We understand this is very, very contentious process, we do recognize that, right? All of us recognize that, and we do not take this vote lightly. So with that being said, council will be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December the 12th, 2024. The chair recognizes councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 12th, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved and property seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December the 12th, 2024, stand approved. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is a request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair recognizes councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the Majority Leader and the Minority Leader. The chair now recognizes councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council, and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and property seconded that the legislative matter stated by councilwoman Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today's if those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in this council chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of city council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. As there are no presentations today, the next order of business is communications. The chair recognizes that the sergeant-at-arms delivered the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on December 18th, 2024, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on December 5th, 2024. Bill number 240242, 240613-AA, 240664, 240876, 240877, 240878, 240879, 240880, 240881, 240, 241026, 241027, 241028, and 241030. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you very much, Chief Clerk. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next introduction of bills and resolutions is our next order of business. The chair recognizes councilmember Phillips. The chair recognizes councilwoman, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader Richardson. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1212 South 17th Street, 1317 and 1511 South 20th Street, 1904 South 23rd Street, 1216 South 31st Street, 1911 Garrett Street, 1932 and 2044 Titan Street, located in the Second Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The chair recognizes councilwoman Jamie Gortier.
Good morning, Council President. Nothing today.
The chair recognizes councilmember Thomas.
Council President, nothing today.
He speaking to the microphone?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the public. Nothing today. Thank you, Council President.
The chair recognizes councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One resolution today.
I'm just gonna ask, I also remember, there's a public comment portion as well, where those who are for or against, the proposal before us today will have the opportunity to express if they are for or against this proposal. Please refrain from any types of, you know, boos and yays, just let us get through this process and you will have public comment as well as that opportunity when we call that vote, please. The chair recognizes, would the clerk please read the title of the bill, please?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Craig Williams for his invaluable contributions to the Philadelphia Streetlight Improvement Project, championed by the Philadelphia Energy Authority and its exemplary leadership in advancing both the economic and social well-being of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues and the public. I want to take one second to recognize my niece, Zara Oret, who is here today to watch democracy in action.
Welcome, Zara.
No, nothing to introduce today, sir.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councilwoman Ketsi Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. No bills and resolutions today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councilmember Jeffrey J. Young. You holding it?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council, thank you, thank you, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions? The chair recognizes councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution for today.
Oh, Tom, Tom. So, just a little bit decorum, now, we trying to make this, now, we make it even because there are supporters who could get up and be like, "Yeah, I don't want to feel like going through all that." Let's keep it moving. So, member Harity, privileged resolution?
One privileged resolution, my brother.
Could the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution, please?
A privileged resolution proclaiming January 13th, 2025, as Korean-American Day in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean-Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhance the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes councilmember O'Rourke.
Good morning, Mr. President. I appreciate the cheers and the jeers, my brothers. Mr. President, I do have one...
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, I do have one privileged resolution to introduce. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir. The chair, would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing December 21st, 2024, as homeless persons Memorial Day in the city of Philadelphia, acknowledging the lives of all unhoused people we have lost over the past year, and bringing attention to housing insecurity across the city.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. Nothing for today.
The chair recognizes councilmember O'Neill.
Yes, Mr. President, no bills or resolutions.
The chair recognizes the gentleman from South Philadelphia, councilmember Schiller. All right, y'all, okay, we got it out. All right, let's pipe down some, y'all. All right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions.
The chair recognizes councilmember Bass. Listen up, y'all, councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Would the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of iconic DJ Gary O, a beloved Philadelphia music legend who graced the airwaves of the community for decades.
I would ask for, before we commit this resolution, to be placed on the calendar on a standing moment of silence honoring the life and legacy of DJ Gary O. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes... The Chair recognizes City Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution.
All right, listen up. Okay. Dr. Ma?
One privilege, privileged resolution.
Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold a hearing on the prevalence of vaping among children and the effectiveness of current enforcement efforts.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of Councilmember Brooks' resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of legendary poet, professor, activist, and revolutionary Nikki Giovanni on the occasion of her passing.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold a hearing concerning the deaths of individuals incarcerated in Philadelphia correctional facilities in recent weeks, including Amanda Cahill, Michael McKinnis, and Joseph Gabor, and evaluating the changes that are needed to prevent further tragedies.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to hold a hearing regarding the state of accessibility in the City of Philadelphia, including ensuring the celebratory events that will be held in Philadelphia in twenty twenty-six are maximally accessible to every person in the city.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Uh, thank you, Council President. There's no bills or resolutions for introduction today. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Being there, no reports from committees today, we will now go into this consideration of the calendar. The next order of business is consideration of our calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember and Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two four zero eight three four dash A, two four one one three four, two four one one three seven, two four one one four two, two four zero nine six three, two four zero nine six four dash A, two four zero nine six six, two four zero nine six seven, two four zero nine six eight, two four zero nine six nine, two four zero nine seven zero, two four zero nine seven one, two four zero nine seven two, two four zero nine seven three, two four one zero six two dash A, two four one zero eight four, two four zero eight one seven, two four one zero two two, two four one zero two three, and two four zero three zero four. The following resolutions on the calendar are being held. Two four zero seven two four, two four one zero nine seven, two four one zero nine eight, two four one zero nine nine, two four zero four two seven, and two four zero six six five, two four zero three zero four will be amended.
Is there a second? Thank you, before considering the bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action in today's session of council. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan from South Philly at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commentants will each have three minutes to speak. However, due to this time limit, may vary from session to session. Due to our extremely long list today, time limit will be one minute. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the one-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time. The light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once one minute has passed, the light will turn red, and the Sergeant at Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject manner. And pretty much the whole list is the same subject manner, which we allow individuals to speak on. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
We have Pastor Carl Day. May Daisy Cruz, Felicia Wilson, Amina Perez, Thalia Amund, and Elaine McGuire also make their way to the podium. Pastor Carl Day, Daisy Cruz, Felicia Wilson, Amina Perez, Thalia Amund, and Elaine McGuire.
Please state your name for the record and you can begin.
Pastor Carl Day, uh, for the record, Council President, I'm from North Philly. All right, so, but, um, I'm in support of this move, uh, for various reasons, uh, but the biggest reason is opportunity. Y'all, twelve shooting incidents this past weekend, five teenagers.
Could you speak into the mic, sir?
You need me to speak?
And I know you're from North Philly.
Okay, cool.
I know now that you were. Go ahead, sir.
But five teenagers shot this past weekend, three fourteen-year-olds, obviously we know, right outside this building. So, we need opportunity. The preservation of human life should supersede anybody's personal agendas. These young men need opportunities. So, let's remind ourselves, fourteen-year-olds, we're talking about a move that will take place and launched in twenty thirty-one? They'll be twenty, twenty-one years old. This is their city. So, when we sit here and talk public safety, we need this area to be safe, we need these young men to have opportunities. So, I'm pro-opportunity, and I thank y'all for who will vote for this opportunity for these young men. We cannot deprive them of opportunities. We cannot continue to make sure that these black young men don't have a chance in Philadelphia. So, again, y'all, we can fear monger folks into what potentially can happen, but I know what's happening right now. People are dying, people are robbing, people are sitting here needing what people consider small jobs or transitional jobs, so we can't downplay opportunity. And I work hard with these young men on a day-to-day. I'm shutting up, though.
Daisy Cruz, SEIU.
Daisy Cruz with SEIU thirty-two B J. We represent over ten thousand, over twenty thousand members here in Pennsylvania, but about ten to twelve thousand of them actually work in Center City. They're the cleaners, they're the security officers, they're the maintenance who take care of these beautiful buildings that these billionaires have actually built, but we're protect, we're doing the work every day. We are in support of the arena because we want to make sure that this arena makes sure that continues to protect jobs, create jobs. Our members are seeing Center City being changed, buildings shutting down, jobs, people losing jobs. So, we want to make sure that this arena is built so that these are members who are from Philadelphia, people of color, people who actually live here, raising their families here, we want to make sure that this stadium is built. We have never been on the other side. Listen, Chinatown, we hear you, we're with you, and we understand because we, everything needs to be protected at the same time. But these people need to make sure that they're taking care of their families. I thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for building the arena.
Hello, City Council President, City Council members. I am Reverend Elaine McGuire. I am also an IVW ninety-eight member. Um, this arena will be a game changer for the City of Philadelphia. That's right. There's right now, in the spot where the arena will go in, what's there now? Nothing. What is it generating? Nothing. Hold on, let's, let's, let's show, let's show, let's show some respect. Please, show some respect. Time to change the game. Philly is a sports fan city. Philadelphia is a union city. It's time to change the game. Twenty-eight of, out of thirty-one cities have, um, have arenas downtown. Philly will have a one-point-three-billion-dollar arena, seven-hundred-million-dollar new tax, um, revenue. What will, what will it generate? Jobs, it will generate jobs, construction jobs, it will generate operational jobs, thousands of jobs. What will it generate? Economy growth. What will it generate? Um, it will generate, um, so many places for our city, we don't even know. They don't talk about what the good that Seventy-Sixers do. What about all of the projects that Seventy-Sixers place do? They have Autism Inclusion, they have Seventy-Six Youth Foundation, they have kids clubs and camps, Black History Month, they have minority, they have mentorship. You gotta build the arena.
One, one second, Liz. One second, Chief Clerk, just real quick. While individuals are doing public comment, whether you're for or against, could we just respect the person on the microphone? That's all I'm asking. Because when people get up and they're supposing it, it could be encouraged for the other side to speak while they're speaking. So, all I'm asking, let's just let the people speak for or against and just refrain from any type of disparaging them or overtalking them while they're trying to give their comments pro or con. That's all we're asking respectfully. Chief Clerk, please proceed.
We had Felicia Wilson, Amina Perez, Thalia Amund. May Jeremy Blattstein, Kate Perez, Selena Sek, Kathleen Magetigan, and Lauren Tolerico also make their way to the podium. Jeremy Blattstein, Kate Perez, Selena Sek, Kathleen Magetigan, Lauren Tolerico. We also have Will McKeithen, Arika Gold Bustos, Shari Cohen, and Lynn Major.
Hello, Philadelphia City Council. Good job, Council President Johnson, starting right on time. I really liked that today. Thank you for that. Uh, my name's Jeremy Blattstein. This Sixers Arena is a game changer for Philadelphia. It's a one-point-three-billion-dollar private investment. It will be the catalyst for Market Street, and it's on top of a public transportation hub because we're going to talk about everyone's favorite thing, SEPTA. This morning, this morning, me and the good gracious Councilman Jones caught the G-Bus down to the Market Frankfurt line. We were looking fly on SEPTA today, so, yo, shout out, Councilman Jones, and for me. So, raise your hand if you rode SEPTA to City Hall this morning. Councilman Jones, raise your hand. One out of seventeen. Hey, thank you very much. And Councilman Johnson, in the new year, you owe it to me, but, hey, or not, oh, I request your riding with me. And hey, ride the ride to City Hall. Thank you very much.
Hey, Jeffrey Young, I mean, you say he was fly on SEPTA, I mean...
He always flies.
Go ahead and begin your testimony.
Hello, my name is Erica Gold Bustos. I am, uh, I run the youth, uh, programs at Philly Thrive. Council President Johnson, I know, I know you know us very well, I know you know our programs very well. I would say good morning, but I don't think it's a good morning anytime we see people brutalized by any kind of policing. I think everyone can agree on that. I also think that if we are talking about arena, I a thousand percent agree, as someone who works with youth, let's talk about that, right? How, how is it pro-youth if we take money away from schools? How is it pro-youth if we take money away from SEPTA? How is it pro-youth if we take away stays spaces in Chinatown? How is it pro-youth if we have youth come up here, state their voices, and then you look at them and say, I do not care? And you know what? All of those youth will become voters. So, let's all keep that in mind as well. If youth are the future, then you better start listening. I will also say that if we are to create and protect youth, slamming them against plexiglass is not that way. How must it feel to be on the side that is pro-that? Let's think about that tonight when we go to sleep.
Would the Clerk please call the next speaker?
We had Shari Cohen, Shari Cohen, Lynn Major, Shari Cohen, Lynn Major, Queen Judith Robinson, Kathy DeSanto, Jethro Heiko, Gary Lee, Paul Brown.
Time out, time out, time out. I'm just asking for everybody on both sides of the balcony. Even you can't hear your own supporters come to the microphone because everybody up there talking and on the gallery down here. And so, I'm going to ask you one more time. If not, I'm going to ask you to step outside. Clerk, please call the next person.
Shari Cohen, Lynn Major, Queen Judith Robinson, Kathy DeSanto, Jethro Heiko, Gary Lee, Paul Brown, please make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name is Paul Brown. I'm a school psychologist at Roxboro High School, and I'm a member of the teachers using at Philadelphia. I'm here to oppose the arena in Center City. For those that are choosing to vote yes for this deal, do you not realize after this vote, you have to explain personally why you settled for less when you were in a position to demand more? Do you not see the confrontation you are fighting for yourself? The school district of Philadelphia is in the process of potentially closing and consolidating schools, um, because we don't have the money to keep them open or renovations, but you are in the prime opportunity right now to demand something better that doesn't displace people, that doesn't harm people, but you just want to rush through a deal that gives them less? Some of my kids can't read, and it's very important to highlight this because talking about increasing jobs, but y'all are not talking about how recruiting is low because the applicants don't have the basic skills to read or get the job or keep the job because of poor education. Council members, this deal abandons the people of Philadelphia. I strongly encourage y'all to reject this arena deal, keep it in South Philly, demand more for the Sixers. Truly think about how this could impact residents of Philadelphia if you, if you do it right. This vote will only... If you vote for this, you're...
My name is Katie DeSanto. I go by Katie A.D. A lot of you have seen me here before. I work in Chinatown, and I have very grave concerns about this development. Of course, we want everybody to have good jobs. I don't know why we need to push out our jobs at small businesses and local cultural centers in order to make those new jobs happen. Once we're pushed out, nobody's coming to replace us. Small businesses hold up the economy of the entire Center City area, and we need more support from the city now and in the future. If you build an arena there, we will get pushed out, there will be shuttered storefronts, it'll spread to Chestnut, it'll spread to Walnut, it'll spread to Callow Hill. It might be exciting for everybody for a few years to have these new construction jobs, but eventually, when those dry up, all we're going to be left with is a shell of a building that's going to wind up pushing out people who have been there for generations. This is a terrible idea, and it was very disingenuous to open this with a prayer because I think anybody who's read the Bible knows that Jesus would not support a bunch of billionaires coming in here to take over our neighborhood.
May Leila Bibi also make their way to the podium?
Quiet, please.
Leila Bibi, then David Q, Kenny Chin, RuPaul, Kathan, and Sam Yoon also make their way to the podium?
My name is Leila Bibi, and I am a union carpenter. I am here, uh, to give comment in support of Seventy-Six Place. Um, you know, there's a lot of things that I can say, there's a lot of, um, points I can make, um, as well as I'm sure the opposition. But one thing I want to point out is that, um, our city is in crisis, and I've heard people speak about the youth and the opportunity, um, that this, that this project will provide. And it's not only, it's not only opportunity for a construction job, it's opportunity for a sustainable future. Someone has the opportunity to get on this project, and it can be, uh, the start of financial freedom, the start of a new life. When someone has to get up to work in the morning and have to go to work early, they're not standing out hanging on the corners at late at night. When they have to go to work and they have to provide for their children, they're not out riding around and committing crimes. When someone has, has been able to take pride in their, in their street, in their neighborhood, in their block, in their house, they don't have time to hang out on the corners.
We have Dave Q, Kenny Chin, RuPaul, Kathan, Sam Yoon, Cindy Nguyen, Sadie Buckter, Richard Chan, Alexander Alton, Stephanie Watts, and Marta Gutenberg. Kelsey Leone, Sadie Shadé Nicol, Nicolos, Tina Yen, Andrew Posnider, Paul Birdsong, Wick Savage... Andrew Posnider, Paul Birdsong, Wick Savage, Ellen Wang, Kenneth McBane.
My name is Paul Birdsong. I'm here on behalf of the Panther Party. Now, speaking in reference to every agenda regarding the building of the Seventy-Sixers Arena in Center City on East Market, it's absolutely true that Philadelphia needs commerce and jobs and direction, but as severely, if not more severely, Philadelphia needs permanent impactful solutions to the overabundance of bullets flying through the city, the overabundance of unsolved murders that's increasing regularly. Twenty-four people shot in one weekend. How can we ensure that people won't become gunshot victims on their way to work at the arena? How can we ensure that people won't, along with their families and their children, become gunshot victims on their way to and from games and events at the arena? Would the arena, in a sense, become a corral state or staging ground for shooters to have easy targets? We're bringing more people and more money into the situation, but not more safety. I don't hear nobody talking about a forensics lab that works, or the LED lights in the hood, or the cameras, or triangulation microphones, or anything like that. All I hear about is bring more money, bring more people, but not protect the people that are already here. All power to the people. Focus on the people.
Okay.
Good morning, council members and visitors. First, I want to say, I came from a family of respect. When people are speaking, give them the right to get their opinion across. So if anybody got anything to say while you're on my time, say it now. But one thing I am for, 110% for the Seventy-Sixers. There's no doubt who I am for. All I'm going to say is this is an opportunity for the city of Philadelphia to not only be the fifth largest city, but a first-class city. Everybody runs to New York, everybody runs to Washington DC. We need people coming here to enjoy themselves. And if you can't enjoy yourself in downtown Philadelphia, this city has something for you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Selena Sek. I'm... Sorry. My name is Selena Sek. I'm a recent graduate from Central High School, and I'm also a current first-year undergraduate student at Brunel College. I'm here representing Students Against the Sixers Arena, Students for the Preservation of Chinatown, and the Ginger Arts Center. First of all, I would like to thank Councilmembers Kendra Brooks, Nicholas O'Rourke, Rolando Jamie-Gaultier, and Jeffrey Young for standing against arena. Thank you for fighting for and with the people of Philadelphia. To start, I was born in Philly, and I've lived here for my entire life. As a young person, I've experienced firsthand what it was like to grow up attending public schools in the Philadelphia School District. Our schools lack air conditioning, libraries, healthy lunches, extracurricular activities, after-school programs, and more. Pushing for the arena would mean diverting funds that could be used to address these issues and choosing to perpetuate educational disparities disproportionately felt by Philadelphia's communities of color. Instead, City Council would rather give the billionaire owners of Seventy-Six Place a tax break, billionaires that made their living by exploiting low-income communities all around the world and helping to feel the global housing crisis. By voting for this arena, you are failing the youth of Philadelphia, and I hope you remember that this is a legacy that we are going to have.
My name is Kelsey Leone. I am a harm reductionist with Community Action Relief Project. I came here today to support Councilmember Brooks's resolution calling for hearings to investigate deaths in Philly prisons and jails. I would like to cede my time to Leslie Gabor, who is the sister of Joey Gabor, who passed away in prison last week.
My brother was a loved one. He was my brother, he was his son, he was an uncle, he was a grandson, and all we know is we have no answers. He walked in the PDU last Wednesday, and he never came out, and we want to know why. Why? Why did he never come out? Why? That, I have so much more to say, and I want answers, and I will not stop. Do you see my face? I will not stop until I have answers. I swear to you, this is my first, and it won't be my last. We want answers, we want justice for Joey. Get that in your heads.
And billionaires have a total...
Councilmember Jones. John, could you get her information to find out what's going on?
My name is... Are we ready?
One second. Councilmember Jones, as Chair of Public Safety, could your team follow up and work with John Christmas regarding this particular issue, please? Thank you, sir. Go ahead, please proceed.
My name is Jenna Osman. I live in Washington Square West. We've all heard how 40% of attendees must take public transit for the arena project to work. That's 40% is an assumption built on the example of Madison Square Garden and the Barclay Center, not a realistic comparison, but let's pretend it's possible. For 40% to use public transit, all rail lines need to be staffed, run trains every 30 minutes at night, and Jefferson Station needs to be staffed and safe, but no one is going to pay for it, not the Sixers, not SEPTA, not the city, and judging from past experience, not the state legislature. But we know who will pay for it: us. Fares will go up, services will be cut, so that suburbanites have the choice not to drive to Seventy-Six Place. Meanwhile, SEPTA estimates it will lose 3.6 million riders per year during construction due to delays. I visited every one of your offices last week and asked what the SEPTA plan was, and there is no plan, and yet the majority of you are about to vote yes. Without a plan, a vote for this project today is a vote against affordable public transit, against clean and green, against Vision Zero, and against the people of the city. We won't forget it.
Right now, our government is bombing Syria, and yesterday Israeli forces shot into the Kamal Adwan Hospital, set fire to the last-standing ICU, and destroyed the electricity and water source for more than 65,000 refugees living inside of the hospital. Our sister city has violated the Lebanese ceasefire agreement 248 times in just four weeks, in addition to its assaults on Syria, Iran, and illegally occupied Palestinian territories. Dawn filed a lawsuit accusing the Department of State of violating the Leahy laws and highlighting the human rights violations of torture and forced disappearances and targeting civilians. We have a legal obligation to shut down businesses in our city that betray federal policies and sell tank shells to an occupation. 200,000 human beings have been annihilated by Israel, one child every four speakers, paid for by the money that should have kept our schools open. This is our genocide in service of apartheid. Let the record show, a plane with the Palestinian flag is flying above City Hall right now. At the same time, Israel has denied another United Nations request to deliver aid into the north of Gaza, with more than 70 days of complete blockade, forcing famine and leaving urgent medical cases to die in the street. Israeli forces are bombing families in the Owida School in Beit Hanoon, and they rounded up their fathers and burned them alive in the schoolyard. We have three businesses in our city that sell to the occupation. Arms embargo now, free Palestine.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Would a clerk please call the next speaker?
We have Ellen Wang, Kenneth McBane, Caitlin Gee, Naria Camalero, Mary Yi, and Shirley Jiang make their way to the podium. Ellen Wang, Kenneth McBane, Caitlin Gee, Naria Camalero, Mary Yi, Shirley Jiang, and Min Nguyen make their way to the podium.
My name is Mary Yi. I'm from the Save Chinatown Coalition. I'm here to ask council to delay the vote on the arena legislation 240963. I want to impress upon you that this arena project is predicated on one important fact, which is not a fact, that is, the modal split that the Seventy-Sixers say will happen with 40% of fans driving to Center City and 40% taking SEPTA. There's no evidence that this is something that will happen. In fact, if there are more than 40% of people driving, there'll be gridlock in Center City and all the implications of that for its public safety. I also want to say that the arena will only be occupied less than half the year, and how is that going to revitalize East Market? There'll be less people here than there are now from the Fashion District, fewer employees, fewer people walking in the streets, basically fewer business and dead space.
My papa and my deceased gong-gong, they lived in New York's Chinatown. Even though they were both aging, we hesitated to ask them to move in with my mom or move them to a retirement community. Why? Chinatown was their home. We can't imagine them living a happy life anywhere besides a Chinatown. They spoke a local dialect, they were not Mandarin, you couldn't just put them in any like secondary Asian community and like expect them to be happy. Chinatown was one of the few places where they could communicate with others in their native tongue. The new arena may be the Sixers' home for 41 days out of the year, but maybe 50 years maximum, but Philadelphia's Chinatown has been home to thousands of people for over 150 years. By building an arena in Chinatown, City Hall is saying that it's okay to eradicate communities all in the name of capitalism.
I oppose Bill Number 240963. I've lived in West Philly District 3 for nearly 20 years. My child is in fourth grade at FACS in Chinatown. I'm with Philly Parents Against the Arena. Our petition that we presented on 11/26 now has over 700 signatures representing kids from 50 schools from all 10 council districts, over 50 schools. We represent families who attend schools and neighborhoods that would be directly impacted and throughout the entire city. Hundreds of us are public school parents. Several Philly district schools are in danger of closure, and many need repairs. It is irresponsible for our city to allow what amounts to a billion-dollar tax break to three billionaires who do not live in Philadelphia. The $10 million increase to the $50 million so-called Community Benefits Agreement is an insult when we know that these developers intend to make billions of dollars off of Center City.
My name is Amina Perez, and I am a female Black developer in the city of Philadelphia.
One second, one second. Could y'all quiet it down? Respect the people. Person that's on the microphone, please. Pro or con? Go ahead, please begin.
My name is Amina Perez, and I'm a Black female developer in the city. My partner Felicia Wilson and I, I have her son here with me, operate several restaurants, namely Amina's, throughout the city of Philadelphia, and we want the city to know that we are extremely excited about the project. It's about time that our voices are heard. I hear this number, 70% of the city does not agree with the project, but I know that that mathematically is impossible when 68% of the city look like me and we're ready. It's our time. We are ready to scale up our businesses. My nephew Mustafa, graduate in engineering from the University of Pennsylvania, we're ready. We want to scale up. We have other things to offer than just operating a standout site. We can be part of the engineering, part of the building. This is a 10-year project, $1.3 billion. It brings economic opportunity. So many times, we're not able to show up. We are the majority, the silent majority. We have children. We have to do things for our kids after school. We have to take off work. We can't stand outside for three hours in a line, but we are present today. We do want this arena, and it provides boundless opportunities for ourselves and our family to create generational wealth for once. Thank you.
In the spirit of former president of this body, Anna Verner, I brought you a letter today. The letter is dated from 2006. I started speaking to this body before that time. I'm talking about today, procedure, procedure. In all the years that I have spoken in this body, never once were we given one minute to speak. The top of her letter talks about how she encourages me, that's why I come. I encourage, I am encouraged when I show up for work every day and find citizens such as yourself, and that means all the rest of you all, who are interested in the day-to-day operations of our government. I will do my best to answer your questions. So I just want to bring that before you as a Black woman, because the first woman who ran the city council as president was very open, very elegant, and allowed the people to speak. Not only did she allow the people to speak, but she heard us loud and clear. In that regard, thank you very much, and have a great holiday, everybody.
Happy holiday. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
We have Jenna Osman, Shontae Love, David Alexander Jenkins, Maria Frisell Roberts, Patricia Sanford, and Catherine Hicks.
I'm Jethro Heiko, speaking in opposition to all of the bills that are coming for the council today. I first wanted to put on the record, make sure the record gets it, an objection under the Sunshine Act. There was many violations today, the ability to access the space, the many speakers had to leave, were prevented from accessing the building, waited in line for three hours. It was clearly anticipated there'd be a large turnout, and the city council did not prepare for it. This arena is bad for the city for a number of reasons. As the lead organizer in the successful efforts to stop the demolition of Fenway Park, a five-year campaign in Boston, which I led before moving to Philadelphia, I know how bad arenas are, ballparks are. Philly deserves much better. Chinatown deserves much better. There's alternative locations, including the existing site. It's time to put an end to this and prepare for Donald Trump's administration, which will come down on Philadelphia. I appreciate the time is up, but the Sunshine Act objection took some time. We must oppose this, you must oppose it.
Would a clerk please call the next speaker?
We have David Alexander Jenkins, Maria Frisell Roberts, Patricia Sanford, Catherine Hicks, Sam Staten, and then Ricky Duncan.
What's your name, sir?
Ken McBane from North Philly.
What's your name, sir?
Kenneth McBane, sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
The Sixers' plan from 2022 and the more recent studies brought many questions, questions from RCOs, from neighborhood organizations, and from the city in general. For the last two years, many of you, as our representatives, were asking important questions about transit impacts, neighborhood impacts, healthcare impacts, housing issues... about transit impacts, neighborhood impacts, healthcare impacts, housing issues, and the Sixers' commitment to the city. Courage was needed this month to continue to ask these questions and to get answers before proceeding with the arena plan. Several of our councilpeople showed this courage with their votes last week. For many of the rest, instead of courage, you settled for an additional ten million dollars over thirty years, getting only an extra half a game of Joel Embiid's salary each year for the city. My hope is that you will somehow find your courage before tougher challenges arrive, before Title One or school breakfasts are threatened, or ICE wants to visit your church or school.
State your name for the record.
David Jenkins, good morning. Laissez-moi manger des gâteaux. I am haunted today by the infamous phrase, let them eat cake.
Hold on one second, bro. Hold on one second, bro. Could y'all keep it down just for a second? Respect the person on the microphone.
Can I restart?
Go ahead, sir. Yeah, I got your time. Go ahead.
Laissez-moi manger des gâteaux. I am haunted today, as you should all be, by the infamous phrase, let them eat cake, so clearly and fully expressed to the people of Philadelphia in your prior vote. As I stared at the portrait of the Austrian princess turned queen of all France, Marie Antoinette, located in our very own Congress Hall, I was reminded that the fate and the consequence such as sentiment, which I am certain she never expressed, had on the people whom felt neglected, underheard, and misrepresented by their governments. Still, with such a warning staring back on us from her portrait, members of this body have turned to the roughly one million sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-four Philadelphians, sixty-nine percent of her populace, and in clear opposition to the voices written, expressed, desired, told them to eat cake. Some members have inferred that they felt pressured by another historic woman who has accused of indifference and excess. Please relay to Madame Dupaca that the people complain of a rule of law that is ripe with threat and withholding of funds in council districts for not lining up their votes with her demands. Please remind Madame that the public bully pulpit attacks on members and constituents in town halls will not be tolerated by our voting populace. Finally, dear councilmen, remember that the confectionery and sugar unbaked ideas that you make law today are a slap in the face to the descendants of people who are taught the world how to unseat their government when the government does not heed its call.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
To everyone who took the time to come before this body to have their voices heard, I salute you for those who are pro and con for this project. My name is Maria Roberts. I am a board member of the African-American Chamber of Commerce, a proud board member. I am also a resident of the city of Philadelphia. I also own a home. I also own a company, I'm sorry, I own a company that resides in Old City. For the last year, I have spent quite a bit of time studying the impact of this project on the city of Philadelphia, and not just on the city of Philadelphia, but on the surrounding region. And I've come to the conclusion that it is an amazing and a well-thought-out project. You have to understand that I love this city. I love everything that it has done to support us, and I'm here to support this, but I also respect the fact that everyone has a right to have their voices heard. Thank you, everyone.
Good afternoon, council president and council members. My name is Patricia Sanford, Alexander Perry, Inc. I am honored to speak to you again, but there are a few points I wanted to make this time, which is that this arena would actually create generational wealth for people that look like me. Number one, we would be able to hire additional people. Number two, we would create jobs and we tend to hire people that look like us. I also want to say that I was born and raised in Philadelphia. I have seen Philadelphia. I have a business for thirty-two years, so I do know that the Sixers' arena will add another element to our great city. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council president and council members. My name is Catherine Hicks. I'm the Philadelphia branch NAACP president, and I have spoken in the past in support of the Seventy Sixers' arena, and I'm here again to speak on their behalf. Again, the Philadelphia branch is in support of the Seventy Sixers' arena. Everyone has the opportunity to have a voice and have a vote, and I was very disappointed to see the disrespect today in council as to not allowing those who want to voice their opinions to have that opportunity, because we are being drowned out about, because of the opposition. Again, this is something for the city in a whole. It is not Chinatown against the African-American community. It is not Chinatown against the city. This is an opportunity for our city to have access to an opportunity that they never had before. I see the shirts where it's saying it's about billionaires. It's not about billionaires. It's about an opportunity, an opportunity for all of us to have a chance to be a part of something. So I want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and I hope that this will be voted on today and passed for the entire city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
May we have Sam Staten, Ricky Duncan, Dawn Williams, Lisa Hastings, and then Obona Haggins also make their way to the podium?
Good morning, council. My name is Sam Staten, Jr., business manager, Local 332 in Philly. Just here just to thank city council and the members and our mayor for a vision for downtown Philadelphia. It's very, very important, we talk about training for our youth and jobs, that this center happens, because there are long sustaining jobs that's involved. And we elected you to make decisions for us in the best interest of us here in Philadelphia. So I want to again thank you for voting this up, and as the mayor said, put your ones up. Put your ones up. One Philly.
Good morning, city council. Good morning, Philly. My name is Ricky Duncan and I'm the CEO and executive director of No More Foundation. I'm here to say the things that a lot of people can't say or won't say. I'm an advocate for the youth of Philadelphia, and I can only advocate for people that has advocated for us and has served us. The Sixers has been a supporter of us since we started our program with the No More Foundation way back at fifty-five, ten. We're part of the youth foundation, we're part of the Sixers' foundation. Joel Embiid has supported us, and I haven't got a dollar from down Chinatown. So I've just got to keep it call ball-a-ball and strike-a-strike. So at the end of the day, I'm going to support whoever supports the youth. I'm here to support the arena. I see the opportunity it presents. No More is acting in the stands for new options and more opportunities, and there's plenty of opportunity in the arena, and I'm here to support it. Thank you.
My name, Dawan Williams. My name is not Dawn, whoever wrote that. I don't, uh-uh, no. But I'm an advocate here in Philadelphia. I work on the ground every day with young men, women, and children impacted by the justice system. And this project, in my personal opinion, is brilliant because it's about opportunity and it's about jobs and it's about when men and women in Philadelphia, no matter what your religious denomination, your color of your skin, or your background or neighborhood, we need jobs, we need pensions, we need medical, we need housing, we need opportunity, and these people over here were brave enough to come to Philadelphia and do it. So y'all have a blessed day.
Good morning. My name is Dave Q. I was the twenty-first to testify. I'm the executive director of Asian Arts Initiative in Councilman Squillies District. I'm not here today to waste my breath addressing a council who is not listening. I'm here to speak to the Save Chinatown Coalition. For two and a half years, we have organized film screenings, music videos, Christmas carols, poetry collections, press conferences, and rallies. When we started our campaign, we were a small group of organizers. At our earliest events, we were asked, are we sure that this wasn't a great arena proposal? But today, thanks to your hard work and dedication, seventy percent of Philadelphians oppose this arena proposal. Our conversations today begin with others telling us, here's why I think this arena is a bad idea. We have changed the landscape of support in the city. The votes may not be in our favor, but know that you are not weak. You are strong, and I hope you stand proud in the work that you have done. I've worked in city government under the Nutter administration. I remember when council president Darryl Clark served as the foil to Mayor Nutter. These two bodies kept one another in check against the worst impulses of their governance. But in today's administration, Mayor Parker endorses the arena and Council President Johnson does her bidding. Our council has proven itself to be weak and aligned with billionaires, but this is not a time to despair. It will be our job to keep our elected officials in check against their worst impulses of government.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hastings. I'm voting against this arena because anybody who's voting for this arena is voting to take a wrecking ball to a vital and busy daytime transit public space, that's Jefferson Station, agreeing to shrink it and turn it so that no one's going to want to go there or be able to, since they want to close many of the entrances. Except as soon as Jefferson Station is invaded, SEPTA service into the city will decline and it won't recover. And this really doesn't create long-term opportunity for anyone in the city. Jefferson Station may not even be functioning by the time the arena is finished. What then? The damage will be done. I support union construction jobs, but it's possible to do it without having ten years of demolition, destruction, and transit interruption. The city has an endless supply of construction jobs that do not involve destroying.
We have Obona Haggins, May Marcello Giordano, Sam Liu, Fern Lee, and Lauren Green also make their way to the podium.
Obona Haggins, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor, arrives today to address ordinance two four zero nine six four, which speaks to the Create the Arena Services District Authority. However, before we move forward, I must also bring attention to the meeting recently convened by Council President Johnson regarding proposed threat of Project 2025. The creation of this arena could potentially generate generational wealth for Philadelphia, creating jobs and opportunities for many of our residents. But it's also important that we remember the broader context within which this development is happening. Public figures such as Solomon Jones and Dr. James Peterson on WURD have raised concerns about Project 2025. My question is, where are the minutes from the meeting? Who attended the meeting? What was the outcome of the meeting? And why wasn't I, the eighteenth member of council, not invited to this meeting? While we focus on the future developments of arenas, we must ensure that all development is done transparently and with full consideration of its impact on the freedmen community, the progeny of the emancipated, the ones who won the Civil War, for us to even be sitting here in the first place. Obona Haggins, president of the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen, over and out.
Hello, my name is Marcello Giordano. We've had a family business in the city for a hundred years in Philadelphia, and I've been at the helm for about twenty-five years. That's a matter of discussion. But I just came down, I rolled out of work a little bit early today to show support for our mayor, and I think she deserves that. I believe in her, no matter what anybody says on either side, she's our mayor and we should support her. I've been going to the gallery since I was a young man, since the nineteen eighties. I actually met my partner, I met her, she worked at the gallery. We have two beautiful children together, and I feel strongly, when I came here today, I'm saddened and I'm frustrated by seeing what happens. I feel like we get misdirection when this all happens. Instead of everybody saying all these other things, and what about public transportation? What about this? We have an abandoned train station on Spring Garden and Tenth. Why can't we turn that into a route for this new project? Whatever this project is, let's do it right.
Good afternoon, council president. My name is Regina A. Hairston, president and CEO, president and CEO of the African-American Chamber of Commerce for Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware. I stand before you today to say that the African-American Chamber of Commerce strongly supports the arena project. Why do we support this project? You cannot grow without investment. We all see how this corridor looks. It is empty, it is blighted, and businesses are leaving every day. We need all businesses represented at the Market East Corridor. We know that black businesses especially are the last when it comes to everything. We have the least amount of employees, we don't get the capital that we ask for, and our voices are only represented in this chamber by a small few of us, even though I represent the majority of them. So our businesses have a right to grow, they are Philadelphians as well, they pay business taxes as well. The black community wants to see this. I stand here today to say we support this, and also I stand here today to say there's two legislative bodies. There's the administration and there is city council. And one thing that I know is Council President Johnson always makes sure, I can't speak for anybody else, but black businesses, black firms are represented, because he went from, oh, you want this percentage of black participation? No, we're going to have fifty percent. So thank you for everything you do and happy holidays.
May we get, may Sadie Butcher, Sam Liu, Fern Lee, Lauren Green, and Nadir Griffin also make their way to the podium?
My name is Fern Lee Hagadorn. I'm speaking against the arena legislation that you are about to vote on. In the Bible, there is a story about two brothers, Jacob and Esau. Esau had something special, his birthright. This gave Esau a number of privileges, but it also came with responsibilities. Long story short, brother Jacob wanted Esau's birthright and struck a deal. Jacob got that birthright and Esau got a bowl of soup. Esau later regretted the deal. So Philadelphia is Esau. The Seventy Sixers are Jacob. Philadelphia gets soup. Seventy Sixers, an arena. This process will set a precedent that a one point three billion dollar deal can be negotiated behind closed doors. This is not what democracy looks like. There will be physical destruction of communities and neighborhoods. This will impact the daily lives of those who live, work, and go to school in Philadelphia, and you will live to regret it. This is not a Chinatown thing. This is not a Washington Square thing. This is not just a neighborhood thing. Vote no, because it's a Philly thing.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Major. I'm from West Philly, Councilmember GATAs District. All the council members, Council President Johnson, thank you for listening. This is a big deal, this whole thing, a lot riding on it, and there's been some constructive dialogue along the way. My only hope would be that if there could be more listening to what people need in this city and not what outside billionaires want. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sadie Butcher. I'm a District Three resident of six years. As a young person who hopes to continue a career in applied research and evaluation, I believe in the power and the value of evidence-based decision-making and policymaking. And the evidence and precedent indicating that Seventy Six Place would have a net negative effect on the city and its people is overwhelming. If the primary reason for building an arena in Center City is economic development, please see the more than a hundred and thirty research studies over past three decades concluding unequivocally that sports venues do not boost local economic activity. That is That is a consensus in the field of economics. To those who continue to claim that this arena is good for the city, that it will bring opportunity and not just decimate existing communities and small businesses, show us the evidence. So many council members have raised important questions during the arena hearings that remain unanswered around the negative impacts of this project, but not a single one of these glaring logistical issues has been sufficiently addressed by Mayor Parker, by City Council, or by the developers. I want you to hear me when I say this. Our communities, our families, and our students are gaining nothing from this disastrous deal, and if you vote yes, we will pay the price for decades to come.
Hi, my name is Lauren Green, and I had traveled through here on my birthday, and someone gave me a sticker about this campaign, but I didn't quite comprehend what it was about. And I, sometimes if I see a school that's being built and there isn't enough light, natural light, I ask the developers to change the plans before they're finished constructing the school, because I think it's a bad plan. And that's how I feel about building the Seventy-Sixers stadium near City Hall. The school district has been suffering for a very long time, and I think if you spent ninety percent of the budget on a plan to greenify the schools, make green schoolyards, more green space in the Philadelphia Public School District, more green education and sustainability education, and then ten percent to just improve the fashion district and improve the building stadium, the stadium itself, it would improve the school district and the quality of life for the city.
Good morning. My name is Nadira Griffin. I am the Philadelphia Community Ambassador at Large for the Councilmatic Districts. I am here speaking on behalf of 240966. We, the people, as a former teacher at the Philadelphia School District, we say, no, and build new schools for our urban nights. And also, I want to say sorry, I want to say sorry, Mother. Last week, I received a Jesus lashing. It was the worst I've ever felt, and I never want to feel it again. So today, my mother said that I am not too grown to apologize, and my mother always told my brothers to stand tall and firm, look a man in his eye, say what you mean, and mean what you say. Last week, Council President Kenyatta Johnson, you asked me nicely, you gave me the indication by saying, "Thank you, Ms. Griffin, thank you, Ms. Griffin," indicating that my time was up, and my heart continued to speak on behalf of the people. So I'm looking you in your eyes today, and I'm saying, "I'm sorry." And I asked you to go deep and apologize, to forgive me for continuing to speak, "I'm sorry," because I wasn't raised that way. And Sergeant of Arms, hi, I'm looking you in, come here. I'm looking you in your eyes too, and I'm telling you that I apologize for continuing to speak. So I'm sorry. And President Kenyatta Johnson, I respect you. Stop smiling, I see you.
You know we went to school together, right? It's cool.
Stop!
It's cool.
So...
It's cool, Nadira.
I want to, I want to tell you that I respect your leadership over the municipality, and I respect the chambers. I also want to apologize, just one word, I also want to apologize to the councilmen and women here, although I don't agree with all the decisions that you all make, but I do respect your leadership. And if any time that the heart continues to speak and I'm advocating for the people, I want to let you all know that I apologize, and I'll pray to have a humble heart the next time, and to be more meek when I come and speak before you. And I want to say, Mother, thank you for keeping me Jesus-grounded.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes today's public comment period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240834-A?
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation of the Philadelphia Prison Community Oversight Board and the Office of Prison Oversight, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes my majority with Councilmember Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240834-A.
Council President, before we take this vote, I just want to take a moment to thank my colleague, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, who has worked with me every step of the way since this bill was introduced, someone who's very passionate about the issues that we're dealing with in our prison system. And I also want to thank all of the members of City Council for co-sponsoring this bill, because at the end of the day, Council President, once we pass this bill, we will make history, right? Like, we will make history as it relates to what we're looking to do with our prisons, the oversight of our prisons, and looking to address an institutional issue that has really had a negative impact on our city, but especially black folks in Philadelphia. So with that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the legislation.
It has been moving property, second it, the Resolution Number 240834-A be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 241134?
A resolution renaming the 1,500 block of South Seventeenth Street Carl Van Wilson Way in honor of Deacon Carl Van Wilson, Sr., for his extraordinary leadership, entrepreneurship, and unwavering commitment to his church and community.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 241134.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second it, the Resolution Number 241134 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 241137?
A resolution also naming the 3,900 block of Haverford Avenue between Lancaster Avenue and Fortieth Street Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Triangle to commemorate the location of his 1965 Freedom Now rally.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gaultier for a motion regarding Resolution Number 241137.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second it, the Resolution Number 241137 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 241142?
A resolution urging the Federal Aviation Administration to investigate and further regulate the use of unmanned aircraft systems, known as drones, over private property after an increase of unidentified drone use in the greater Philadelphia area.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a motion regarding Resolution Number 241142.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second it, the Resolution Number 241142 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240963?
An ordinance amending the existing gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District, being the area generally bounded by Philbert Street on the north, Eighth Street on the east, Eleventh Street on the west, and Market Street on the south, to remove certain portions of such property generally bounded by Philbert Street on the north, Tenth Street on the east, Eleventh Street on the west, and Market Street on the south from such district, and approving the amended project plan of the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the redevelopment of the gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District, and making certain findings and declarations, all in accordance with the Tax Increment Financing Act, being the Act of July 11, 1990, PL 465 Number 113 as amended, and authorizing the Director of Finance and other offices of the city to execute the documents and do all things necessary to carry out the intent of this ordinance.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Council will be at ease. Councilmember Squiller, would you like to speak, or you don't have to call, you now have to call up the bill? Do you want to speak?
Yes, yes, Council President.
All right. This bill had been read on two different days, the question...
Let me, all right, now, all right, well... Thank you, Mr. President. The process for this arena legislation has been difficult for all council members. The time we all spent meeting with stakeholders and our discussions among one another have led to companion legislation and amendments to the CBA. The input from all the council members were invaluable during this process. Again, like we stated, it's been difficult for myself and others during the process. I want to thank you as the Council President and your leadership, Mayor Parker, for your willingness to compromise and support changes made to the legislation and the CBA. The willingness to do that was important in order to have the legislation before us. The additional resources she provided desperately needed for affordable housing is something to help preserve the cultural heritage of Chinatown. I want to say, if this arena legislation is to move forward and the arena is to be built, this is not the end of the process. I will continue, and we will continue, to meet with all the stakeholders, especially the Chinatown and Wash West communities, and to understand their budget requests and needs as this process moves forward. So again, thank you for your time and your efforts. The line of communications will remain open, and we will continue to meet with all the stakeholders. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Squiller, for your leadership. This bill had been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye.
The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, the majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the chief clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240964-A?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Philadelphia to organize...
Go ahead, chief clerk.
To organize an authority to be known as the Arena Services District Authority pursuant to the terms of the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye.
The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240966?
An ordinance to grant the necessary authorizations for the city to help facilitate development, construction, and operation of a new arena for the Philadelphia Seventy-Sixers professional basketball team and for other uses, including authorizing the commissioner of public property and such other city officials as may be appropriate, on behalf of the city to enter into the following agreements and take the following actions. One, acquire fee simple title to all or portions of 1,001 through 1,025 Philbert Street, 1,001 through 1,019 Market Street, and 1025 Market Street, to gather the Market and Philbert Street properties. Two, acquire fee simple title to other parcels of land, aerial areas, and subsurface areas in the vicinity of the Market and Philbert Street properties, including without limitation those areas reverting to the city or other parties in connection with the striking of certain aerial portions of Tenth Street between Market Street and Philbert Street, the additional properties, and other nearby parcels and areas. Three, enter into a ground lease agreement, the lease with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development paid, under which the city would lease to paid all or portion of the Market and Philbert Street properties and the additional properties, if any, and other parcels and subsurface areas the city now owns in the vicinity of those properties, all of which collectively would constitute the arena site. Four, join in or consent to a sublease and development agreement, the sublease between paid and either CBL Arena LLC, ArenaCo, an entity affiliated with the Philadelphia Seventy-Sixers LP, the Seventy-Sixers, or another entity affiliated with the Seventy-Sixers under which ArenaCo or other Seventy-Sixers related to entity would sublease the arena site and cause an arena to be constructed on it, including a multipurpose sports and entertainment facility, an ancillary accessory, and related amenities, improvements, and infrastructure of the arena, to agree to other related conditions. Five, upon the expiration or termination of the sublease or other circumstances set forth in the sublease, convey fee simple title to the arena site to paid for disposition to ArenaCo. Six, grant, accept, amend, relocate, and extinguish easements, agreements, conditions, covenants, and restrictions encumbering or benefiting the arena site and any city-owned property adjacent to the arena site for the benefit of the arena site to facilitate construction and operation of the arena. Enter into, seven, enter into direct operating covenants agreement among Seventy-Sixers paid in the city, under which the Seventy-Sixers agree to play substantially all of their regular season and playoff home games in the arena. And eight, take all actions necessary and appropriate to accomplish the intent and purpose of this ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes.
Would a chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero nine seven six?
Two four zero nine six seven, an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provisions by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of certain project-related services to promote, among other things, the growth and expansion of business, commerce, and tourism within the city of Philadelphia, in connection with the development of a multipurpose sports and entertainment facility, including an arena to accommodate National Basketball Association games and family entertainment, community retail, and other uses, authorizing and approving the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement, and covenating to make necessary appropriations for such purposes, and authorizing city officials to take necessary or appropriate actions to accomplish the intent and purpose of the ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions.
And chief clerk, I says nine seven six and you said two four zero nine six seven for the record. That's two four zero nine six seven for the record. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll? Councilmember O'Neill? Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, majority of all members having voted in affirmative,
the bill passes. Would a chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero nine six eight?
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades of a portion of City Plan number three oh seven by striking from the City Plan and vacating Philbert Street from Tenth Street to Eleventh Street, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young? Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass? Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are seven, twelve, the nays are five, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative,
the bill passes. Would a chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero nine six nine?
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan number three oh seven by striking from the City Plan and vacating certain aerial portions of Tenth Street between Market Street and Philbert Street, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye.
The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero nine seven oh?
An ordinance authorizing CBL Arena LLC and its successors in interest to construct, own, and maintain various right-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of one thousand one through nineteen Market Street, ten twenty-five Market Street, and one thousand one through twenty-five Philbert Street, Philadelphia PA one nine one oh seven, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young? Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative,
the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero nine seven one?
An ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending certain definitions relating to signs, creating an arena area with CTR, Center City Overlay, District Overlay, and making related changes, including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with zoning rules for a proposed arena in Center City, and approving a master plan for the arena area, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young? Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember... Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative,
the bill passes. Would a chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero nine seven two?
An ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Section fourteen dash nine oh six, entitled Market Street East Sign Regulations, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass? Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative,
the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero nine seven three?
An ordinance approving the amendment of a Neighborhood Improvement District in the area generally bounded by, including Eleventh Street to the west, Philbert Street to the north, Eighth Street to the east, and Market Street to the south, with the exception of certain condominium unit, it's eight oh, at eight oh one Market Street condominium, not included in the district, known as the Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District, to remove certain portions of such property generally bounded by Philbert Street from such district in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, and under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please read, please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Nay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
The ayes, aye. The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, majority of all members having voted in affirmative,
the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four one zero six two dash a?
An ordinance amending Section fourteen dash five hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section fourteen dash five oh two entitled CTR, Center City Overlay District, and fourteen dash seven oh two Floor Area Height and Dwelling Unit Density Bonuses, and creating Section fourteen dash five four two entitled PCH, Philadelphia Chinatown Overlay District, and making related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Brief comment. I think the Chinatown overlay is a good piece of legislation to support the community, and I will be voting aye on the overlay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
I also want to help to protect Chinatown with the zoning overlay, so aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are twelve, the nays are five, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative.
Fourteen to three? The ayes are fourteen, the nays are three. A majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Counsel will be at ease. That's a good thing. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four one zero eight four?
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2024 from the General Fund, from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund, from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Transportation Fund, from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the Water Fund, to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and to the Transportation Fund, to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero.
A majority of all members voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero eight one seven?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia, a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by counsel proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the creation of the Philadelphia Prison Community Oversight Board, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
Council President Johnson.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a chief clerk please read the title of Bill number two four zero zero two two?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with twenty four oh one Walnut LP for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at twenty four oh one Walnut Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
He said aye, okay. Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill number two four one zero two three?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a lease agreement with ACHSS Office Ventures Two LLC for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at nineteen thirty South Broad Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, one nine one four five, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please read the title of, call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill number two four zero three zero four?
An ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, to require proof of certain insurance certificates, all under certain terms and conditions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill number two four zero three zero four be amended. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council.
Can I get a second? It has the moving property seconded that the amendment to Bill number two four zero three oh four be adopted. All those in favor would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Craig Williams for his invaluable contributions to the Philadelphia Streetlight Improvement Project championed.
Go ahead, Chief Clerk.
Honoring and recognizing Craig Williams for his invaluable contributions to the Philadelphia Streetlight Improvement Project championed by the Philadelphia Energy Authority and his exemplary leadership in advancing both economic and social well-being of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr. for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to briefly talk about this as to the reason why we honored him and his company. This is what we've been fighting for. He is replacing LED lights around the city. He started in the fourth, but he's moving throughout every district in the city of Philadelphia. But what is interesting is the workforce he's using are at-risk youth, returning citizens, and it is something that we've been fighting for, for a very long time, to be able to take residents, utilize residents to repair city infrastructure work. And so we wanted to um acknowledge him, his company, for doing what is socially right, what is economically right, and what is good for uh the, the environment in the city of Philadelphia. So with that, I move for the adoption.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution proclaiming January thirteenth, twenty twenty five as Korean-American Day in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean-Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhance the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council.
Second.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing December twenty first, twenty twenty four's Homeless Persons Memorial Day in the city of Philadelphia, acknowledging the lives of all unhoused people we have lost over the past year and bringing attention to housing insecurity across the city introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. With the nod to Councilwoman Gautier, I do move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of iconic DJ Gario, a beloved Philadelphia music legend who graced the airwaves of the community for decades introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say um just, just a couple of words about DJ Gario if I could. Um, you know, some people might be wondering why are we recognizing someone who was a DJ, who was, you know, playing music at parties and whatnot. Gary was so much more than that, and anyone who knows him, who's ever worked with him, knows he was really a staple in our community, being active and engaged and really just an all-around wonderful human being. And so we lost um a great part of Philadelphia um in losing him. And so with that, I call for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold a hearing on the prevalence of vaping among children and the effectiveness of current enforcement efforts introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ahmad for motion on the resolution.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating and honoring the life and legacy of legendary poet, professor, activist, and revolutionary Nikki Giovanni on the occasion of her passing introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold a hearing concerning the deaths of individuals incarcerated in Philadelphia Correctional Facilities in recent weeks, including Amanda Cahill, Michael McKinnis, and Joseph Gabor, and evaluating the changes that are needed to prevent further tragedies introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to hold a hearing regarding the state of accessibility in the city of Philadelphia, including ensuring the celebratory events that will be held in Philadelphia in twenty twenty six are maximally accessible to every person in the city, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor of the motion would signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
Thank you very much. Counsel will be at ease. This completes our calendar for today. Is there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I, this is a long speech to just so you know. Um, good afternoon, colleagues, and to everyone in the council chambers today. I want to take a few minutes this afternoon to talk about the resolution that I introduced. First, I want to acknowledge my resolution along with you, Council President, um, and Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke honoring the life and legacy of Nikki Giovanni. Nikki Giovanni was many things, a poet, activist, an independent thinker who channeled the joy, pain, love, and celebration of the Black experience. Philadelphia played an important role in that, including where she wrote her first poetry collection, Black Feeling, Black Talk. And her words get me through challenging times, and I look to them often, and I pray for her family and may she rest in power. I also introduce two very important resolutions to hold hearings next year on priorities we uh were unable to address during this calendar year. First, I'm introducing a resolution calling for a hearing on our city's preparedness to ensure accessibility of our disabled population ahead of the national attention we will receive in twenty twenty six. As the Chair of the Committee on Disabilities and Special Needs, I want to make sure that everyone has access to the cultural events that showcase the best of Philadelphia. That starts with the city. Uh, we look, we will look at ways to make sure that planning for these citywide events reflect the diversity we need to ensure um we do not leave behind our disabled community. Second, I introduce a resolution calling for hearings on the recent deaths in Philadelphia jails. While much of detention has, much of our attention has been focusing on the arena for the last two months, the challenges of our s- city faces have not gone away. We will see schools close in the next coming years. Septa remains a huge common, a hu- a huge concern despite federal flex spending we received. And just this weekend, at least two dozen people were shot, including teenagers right outside the doors of City Hall. This body and the mayor must prioritize these challenges in twenty twenty five. And sadly, this weekend, we also got word of another death in the jail system involving someone going through medical detox and their needs not being met. Joseph Gabor passed away after being found in his holding cell with paraphernalia nearby. And he was supposed to have been transferred by then, um, and he was supposed to have been checked on. This is the fifth time we have seen deaths in jail, in our jails this year, including similar circumstances and the sixtieth since twenty twenty. So when I first entered council, I raised these current concerns in our budget hearings and direct, and directly in meetings with the administration. These deaths cannot be swept under the rug because we were too busy working on a playground for billionaires. This fall, Amanda Cahill's family spoke directly to this chamber so that her death might not be in vain. And I asked this body to take meaningful action, and this is my first step in the promise I have made to her family, Michael McKinnis's family, and Joseph Gabor's families and loved ones. You're welcome.
Thank you.
What, I'm not that, I'm still going, I'm as long. I was elected to represent working families whose voices and struggles are often lost and moneyed special interests that dominate politics. My base across Philadelphia has demanded and pushed me to fight against these corporate interests on the behalf of our neighborhoods, including Chinatown. And over the last two years, I have opposed the arena at every step. I voted no on every procedural vote, and I'm one of the three council members who put out a plan around a three hundred million dollar CBA for public consideration. I personally faced one point five million in attack ads from these same special interests who are pushing this arena. And I'm the only council member who took a public position on the woefully inadequate CBA tolling fifty million. And if I want to say so myself, that's courage, and that's what we're supposed to do as elected members, to lead from the front. History has shown us time and time again that the only path for our collective survival is our collective struggle. And when power and money descend on our communities, we must stand up and fight back, even when the fight is impossible and difficult. The arena vote held today demonstrates how far we go as a council. The far we have to go to truly listen to and reflect the voices of our community instead of the voices of the wealthy few. Overwhelming opposition for working people across the city failed to stop a handful of billionaires from carpetbagging the heart of our downtown and pitting two communities of color against each other. This, to me, is heartbreaking. It is a backbreaking, is the backbreaking of our communities, and it represents another terrible example of the cities racing to the bottom to appease billionaires. To the allies who have my back, thank you. We need more courage, more movement, more power to resist the kind of darkness. And I am grateful to the people in our coalition for doing everything they felt was possible to resist. This fight is not over, and I will continue doing everything within my power to ensure that Chinatown is made whole by this city. It may not be easy to see it now, but this moment will galvanize our city and our movement. Great leaders come from great struggle. It is my own fight against billionaires trying to privatize my children's school that activated me and brought me here. I know this is happening as we speak in Chinatown. In fact, I can promise you that someone in this very room may be radicalized by this moment and using this betrayal of Chinatown to get active. We will all witness the power of this movement as activated in the coming years. We have our power, we have our own power in this legislative body, and the people of this city expect us to use that power on their behalf. And as we enter twenty twenty five, I will not forget where the people stood in this fight, the strength they showed to make their voices heard, and their unwavering commitment to fight for their communities against all odds. They will not rest. We will not rest. This fight is not over, and I believe that we will win. And I want to thank you all, and let's get back to doing the people's work.
Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is another word from the minority, and today, on the final council session of twenty twenty four, that word is anticipation. In a commercial country like ours, we've made the start of November through whenever y'all go back to work, the entire Christmas season, in order basically to generate maximum profit. Point of information, Christmas begins on the twenty fifth, and it culminates on the sixth of January, which, with an observance of a holy day that we call the Feast of Epiphany, or if you're in the Eastern Church, Theophany. The season that precedes the twelve days of Christmas, the one that we're in now, is known as Advent, Adventus in Latin. It means coming. Coming, a nod to the coming in breaking of the divine in the Christian tradition into human flesh and into human history. An event we acknowledge as the birth of Christ. The Advent season in being a coming is big on anticipation of Jesus's first coming, big on his anticipation of Christ's second coming, and anticipation of the Christus coming into the lives and the hearts that are open to the Holy. Anticipation, however, isn't always excitement. The feeling can be accompanied by anxiety, by dread, by fear, and hope, and cynicism, and much more, naturally affirmed by the darkening of every passing day in this season. So this may be a good reminder that for as much as people approach this season with excitement and cheer, it truly isn't complete without a more complicated and sometimes troubled complexity of feelings. People should know it's okay not to be okay, that darkness is a part of this season as well. And if you felt darkness and confusion through this holiday season, those who are listening now or later, know that that is part of many traditions, along with cheer and charity by its side. So reach out to someone, feel your way to the light in this dark time. It's important that we do that. But not only does darkness come with the season, so does the cold. And that reminds me of those someones who, and those neighbors, really, who are without shelter, without houses. Councilmember Gautier has been introducing the resolution that we call today Homeless Persons Memorial Day for the last few years, and I want to thank her for keeping this issue front and center over the past few years in your work. The resolution acknowledges December twenty first as Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Philadelphia, acknowledging the lives of all unhoused people we have lost over the past year, those nameless persons, too many of us, that have transitioned and bringing attention to housing insecurity across the city. It should be noted that an estimated forty-eight percent of Philadelphians pay more than thirty percent of their income on housing alone, and only thirty-eight affordable housing units exist for every one hundred low-income households. This resolution also, this resolution also recognizes efforts that were made by the government of the city of Philadelphia, local organizations and individuals who are supporting unhoused populations. And I just wanted to just uh lift up a nod and a congr- a thank you, really, to groups like Project Home, folks like uh Ross Picardo of the Sunshine House, our allies and friends over at Prevention Point, so many of us. While many of us are feeling generous and charitable in this time and this season, uh, I think the spirit of the season calls on us to move from just generosity and donations to recognition. We have to recognize Phillies homeless as our neighbors, as much as we do with our house neighbors. Sadly enough, even when we know people before they lost their homes, this is a hard principle to maintain, particularly when it comes to the stranger. They are our neighbors as well. Quick word here on this. To the people out there who are disappointed by this body's decision and intent on making it known, as they have been as it relates to the arena today, that's all right. That used to be me, Council President, outside the ring, making demands of those seated within this ring as well. The feeling is familiar to not just me, but generations of Philadelphians for all sorts of reasons, some of whom have gone on to be legends and leaders in this city, sitting in seats of power today. It is my hope that this process hasn't pushed you all away, which was my ask at the beginning of all this, from your government, but in fact, I hope that it's moved you into thinking deeply about how to win the next fight that you take up. There are all sorts. People came into council every week talking about land use, talking about shifts in property ownership, gentrification, and a decreased feeling of neighborhood level control, whether they were imagining a prior era of influence or not. These were all such resonant issues for those of us that, and many of us did sat through all of them, uh, through this process, because many of us can and do relate to them at different scales all across the city. Questions related to land, housing, ownership, and influence are all deep-seated issues that fundamentally shape views of democracy, especially locally. Democracy, not just voter turnout in election season. The vote today leaves council with some hard questions to answer, including the Capitol and and operating costs that SEPTA has said they need for this to work. Neighborhood protection for Chinatown particularly will be an ongoing struggle. So to touch on the word of the day, as I said at the beginning, that is something to anticipate. Again, it is my prayer that this process hasn't pushed you away from your government, but moves you into thinking deeply about how to win the next fight that you take up. As Angela Y. Davis taught us, freedom, y'all, is a constant struggle. You're alive and you're not dead, as my mentor used to say, because you're not done. There is more that is required of all of us. Finally, speaking of anticipating next fights, the next stated meeting, Council President of this council, is on January 23rd. That's three days after the inauguration of now-President-elect Donald John Trump. There will be a new regime in town across this land when we come back in these chambers. Different constituencies, I'm sure many of us have gotten emails about it and have seen, have talked about this a bit since the election, many constituencies have been trying to prepare for the consequences of this new administration, thinking about immigrant rights and migrant justice groups. Associated orgs have held two recent marches asking for the city to rededicate itself to the sanctuary city designation it has held down for so long. I think that's notable. LGBTQI+ AI communities, thank you, Leader Landau, Member Landau, people for the work that you do as well. People are rushing to secure medical procedures, access to medicine, adoption rights, and marriage licenses. As you all well know, I have a close friend who is trans, trying to get a vacation before he gets inaugurated because they don't know if they're going to be able to move around the way they want to. This is real for many of us. Sadly, the Enquirer reports that there's little impetus among queer communities, queer Philadelphians, to fight back with demonstrations because many people believe not enough Americans would care. That's a damning indictment. We believe this new Trump administration will be more ideologically coherent and potentially more efficient at achieving their many goals. This is a city that moved to the right, relatively speaking, during the election. Turned out, November was down 1.3% from 2020, and Trump did better with working-class, working-poor voters than ever. We're not leaving this post-2016 era in conclusion. Better off by demonizing our neighbors, no matter how we feel about their views, pro or con. We must do right by Philly, week by week, month by month, year by year, so that people feel that voting is worth it at all, which is why I feel compelled often to call our attention to the concept of democracy. It's much more than voting. It's about what we do and how we show up, week by week, month by month, year by year. Over the break, we will rest. We should reflect, and then we must move the city, as you say, Council President, often, forward, because this body has so far to go to serve our people. I do anticipate our collective work together going forward. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Any speeches on behalf of the majority, the chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I swear to you, and on all I love, my intentions was not to give a speech today. I wanted to get up out of here and be a part of the holiday season, but I feel compelled to do so. Listening to my colleagues who I love and respect, love and respect, if you listen to them, they would have you believe that the city took a L today, that somehow we all lost. We didn't all lose. There's a kid at ESPN Barber Shop that has a shot at getting on a construction site today. There's a kid in ESPN Barber Shop that may well work at the stadium, learn some things, start his own business, and become the next person of means in this town. You would think Donald Trump won today. He did not. The City of Philadelphia, Market Street East, won today. And have, at least I got one, all right. I don't do this for applause. I don't do this for likes. I don't do this for any of that. I do this for the people. And when you make tough decisions, sometimes you're going to get booed. But I know the people that are in this room care, all of them. They don't always agree, but if everybody agreed, 16 of us would not be necessary. We're supposed to struggle in this room about issues pertaining to the people. Now let's go to where we agree. Winter is coming. Donald Trump is coming. Spickets will be turned off from the federal government. We have to get what we can to do what we can for our people going forward. Night will pass, and the dawn will come, but we're going to struggle while, while he's in that office. So, as we start to look at how that affects us, department by department, agency by agency, we need to put our heads together and figure out what we can do to protect not just Chinatown, but the City of Philadelphia. Ain't going to be a bunch of agreements in places that going to get gentrified going forward. So we got to figure out what laws, what policies we can put on the books from this chamber to protect them. And I stand ready for that work. I stand ready to join my colleagues in that work. But I just don't, I can't sit by and, and just say that people in my district, some of them won today. And we're going to keep fighting for all of the citizens of Philadelphia, not just one town. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. Today, we renamed the 3,900 block of Haverford Avenue Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Triangle. In a wave of success following the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. continued to galvanize Black Americans through his Freedom Now rallies. And on August 3, 1965, 10,000 Philadelphians gathered at the intersection of 40th and Haverford in West Philly to hear Dr. King speak about the collective power we yield when we, the people, stand up for justice. This Freedom Now rally is a proud piece of our community's history and a milestone in West Philly's storied tradition of leading our society into a more equitable future. Philadelphia is the birthplace of modern democracy and freedom. But for most of our nation's history, the rights enshrined into law by our founding fathers at Fifth and Chestnut did not apply to those who lived at 40th and Haverford. Luckily, Philly's quest for true freedom did not end when Congress left Independence Mall, because whether we are talking about 1965 or 2024, West and Southwest Philly loudly challenged America to live up to its promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all. Every year on MLK Day, we gather at Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Triangle and recommit ourselves to the values Dr. King asked our community to model nearly 60 years ago: compassion, justice, and peace. This January will mark the sixth year I participate in this tradition, but it will feel different for many reasons, and not just because we will have a newly named street and a freshly restored mural. While we gather in community on the very same day down in Washington, DC, President-Elect Donald Trump will be taking the oath of office, officially marking the start of what we know will be some of the darkest four years in our nation's history. This body will not meet again until after President-Elect Trump and his cronies seize control of Washington. During our next meeting, we may very well have to reckon with new crises, such as the mass deportation of our constituents, a crumbling economy brought upon us by ill-advised tariffs, a rollback of our fundamental rights, and cracks in the very foundation of our democratic institutions that were started right here in this city. But today's street renaming makes me recall Dr. King's teaching, that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice. The newly-minted Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Triangle is both a recognition of our history and a recommitment to fighting for a future with collective care and liberation, just as Dr. King taught us to do. I'm glad that, under your leadership, Council President, this body is working to ensure that no matter what is happening in Washington, Philadelphia remains a place where everyone can thrive, regardless of their race, gender, sexual orientation, economic background, or immigration status. Too much is at stake to sit back and wait for what we know is coming. We must continue to show the world that the City of Philadelphia, just like Dr. Martin Luther King, will always be a, quote, "drum major for justice, peace, and righteousness." Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Very briefly, Council President, and colleagues, I first and foremost want to thank you all for your vote today and your support for our prison oversight legislation, as I thank Councilmember O'Rourke earlier for working closely with my office and my team to pass this historic legislation. I know there's a lot of other stuff going on, but at the end of the day, since Thanksgiving alone, there have been four stabbings at the prisons and two guards who've been charged with smuggling contraband in the jail. So when we look at the issues that we're facing in the prison, I automatically think of our former colleague Sharon Vaughn, who while wasn't in council that long, took on this issue and tried her best to raise awareness around some of the issues that we're facing. I think about Councilmember O'Rourke's speech in council a little while ago, when he talked in depth about some of the horrific conditions and experiences that the prisoners and his staff and the folks who are up there are dealing with. So I just want to take a moment to thank the Defenders Association, the Prison Society, and a special thank you to the Abolitionist Law Center and my man Saleem. I want to give him a personal shout-out for his advocacy and sticking with us throughout the course of this process. I want to recognize both District Council 33 and 47, but especially District Council 47, for their willingness to sit with my team to figure out exactly what this legislation is going to look like. And of course, we have to thank Mayor Parker. Thank you, Mayor Parker, Rachel, and her entire team for working with us. We've been in negotiations with the mayor for the entire year. So while all the other issues are taking place and while we're discussing a lot of things, we still were able to put ourselves in a position to essentially get this done. And as I close out, Council President, I could not have done this without my staff. And I know we don't give our staff a lot of credit, but Dave Maynard and Dan and Don Miller in my office, them three specifically, have met with people for over two years, two years, Council President, in order to put us in a position for this legislation to be passed into law today. But the work continues. Next year, we'll continue to work with the mayor and the coalition to put us in a position to define exactly what this prison oversight board will look like. We're also going to ask the constituents of Philadelphia to vote on this matter, because it will turn into a ballot measure. And I want to close out by thanking my colleague, Councilmember Jones. He doesn't even know this, but the work that he did with CPAC, with the board that he helped lead, is a foundation that we tried to use to put us in a position to be able to get this passed. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues and the City of Philadelphia. We look forward to engaging you around this legislation and hope to earn your vote next year, so this becomes the new law of the land in the City of Philadelphia as it relates to prison oversight. Thank you all.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. This year was a very different year for me as a first member, first-term council member, right? So look at the things that we had to accomplish, right? This year, we have, in my office, removed 300 cars, 300 abandoned cars from the street. We've taken thousands of constituent service requests. But I think our last day here looks, we spent so much time on this arena, and it took away time from doing the little things like that that matters in our districts and in our communities. And, you know, the pastor that was, that said the prayer today, he mentioned, he said something that kind of resonated with me when we talked, he talked about marginalized communities and taking care of the least of thee. And I think that when, as I sit here on this body and I make decisions, that those two are always at the forefront of decisions that I make: marginalized communities and taking care of the least of thee. But, you know, this particular proposal for this arena, I want folks to know that it is not an arena that has caused issues or, you know, that folks are upset with. I really think that if this was planned a little differently, a little bit more thoughtful, we could come to a conclusion that would benefit all Philadelphians. I think that when we allow companies, corporations to basically create the deal, I don't think that that is always in the best interest of the residents of the City of Philadelphia. And if you look at what this deal, you know, is, it has some positives. It has some great things that I think City Council, under your leadership, Mr. President, was able to accomplish with the historic 50% goals in our EOP. Historic, but we need to have those historic points, because this is a historic development. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And when these once-in-a-lifetime opportunities present themselves, we have to govern what I think is in the best interest of the public. And understanding what arena deals are and what stadium deals are, and looking at all the facts and looking at history, when history tells us that the revenue projected will not come, when history tells us that, you know, the destruction of communities is likely, we have to ask for a little bit more when it comes to protecting these communities. And so, you know, when I threw out there early, that $300 million figure, it wasn't just out of thin air, right? It was not. It was out of what our real tax projections are going to be over the next 30 years, right? And that we have to think about that. It's 30 years. We have to look at what the impact is going to be on our public services. So they say there's no public money going into, there's no city money going into this, but at the same time, yes, there's no city public dollars, but our city is still going to get taxed. We're going to get taxed with the issue of SEPTA and traffic and transportation, right? We're going to get taxed. And yes, it's a great deal for our brothers and sisters in union. It is a great deal, and I can tell you that there are some wins for you all in this deal, some great wins in this deal. But we have to look at the landscape of our entire city and taking care of our students that go to Dobbins and Ben Franklin and Youth Build and Lincoln and Swenson and Masbaum and Edison and Randolph. Those kids, I just don't see where it is guaranteed that they're going to benefit from this arena. And those are the kids that we have to look out for in our communities if we're, say, they're the future. Those students, we need to provide real opportunities for them, not just these dreams that they'll be able to participate. Where is it on paper, right? I'm using my experience as an attorney, I mean, I can't help it, that's just who I am, to look at deals and from a different perspective. And this deal for the City of Philadelphia, for the residents, for the residents of the Fifth District, I do not believe was the best deal from the beginning. And I think that council has done its due diligence. It has really done its due diligence and done what, and it has done what council believes is in the best interest of their constituencies. I really, truly believe that, and understanding that, you know, what capitalism really is. We are going to increase the value of the Philadelphia 76ers by at least 50% by this. And so what that means is that they're four-something-billion-dollar companies, going to go to about six or seven billion dollars. Billion is a lot of money when you think about how we, you know, level up. If we're trying to level up, let's get more of the pie. If we come together collectively, we can get more of the pie, the people will win. And I think that as we move forward in developing our city and developing East Market Street, you know, I look forward to, you know, working with the council president, working with the mayor, on ensuring that our communities really benefit from this deal. Because that's the only way that this will be a success, if our communities really benefit from this deal. And as I look forward and I see the things that are happening in these chambers today, you know, it reminded me of, you know, stories I've heard from, you know, everyone knows I'm a proud Girard College graduate, but stories I've heard from the C-SU B-More Freedom Fighters when they were protesting Girard College to integrate Girard College, to do what's right for the community, for the people, to allow me this education to be here at this very moment, right? The Freedom Fighters like Karen Asper Jordan, who just had a birthday, like Bernice Devon, like Vivian, Attorney Vivian Crawford, those were young people protesting- Those were young people protesting for what's right, to do what's right. They were dragged around, dragged out, hauled in jail for protesting what is right. And I look at what my ancestors would say, who held this seat? What would my ancestors say? What would Dr. Ethel Island say, right? What would your Honorable Judge Raymond Pace Alexander say? What would Sisu B. Moore say? What would they say when this vote came up? What does my community say? What did the Fifth District say? As I went around and talked to folks, I talked to hundreds of people, and only two people who did not have an economic, political, whatever, interest in this said that this is something that they wanted to see for our city at this current rate. And so you look, when you have all these facts, because these are facts, facts about what arena deals are and what they project and things like that, these are all facts. So when you have all these facts and we're entrusted by the people to make the best interest, what's in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare of a community, I think I had to come to that decision, because I believe that's the right thing to do. And, you know, I want folks to know I am not anti-development, anti-labor. I am 100% in solidarity with our labor movement. And they have to realize, it was less than 100 years ago when members of the labor movement were arrested and abused, right, for fighting for equity and efficiency, to have their voice in their careers, to have a seat at the bargaining table. There is a lot of similarities there, a lot of solidarity that can be there. But we can't never bargain in bad faith, and I think that's what, you know, this, I think that was presented to us from the very beginning. It was a bargain in bad faith. And so as we think about our future and developing our city, where we have a potential $11 billion SEPTA subway, right, on the Roosevelt Boulevard, something that unions will be able to build, as we think about our school district infrastructure, right, and working with Councilmember Thomas on the School Development Authority, right, and we think about how those jobs will be there for our communities, for our members, for our brothers in the unions to provide for their families, there are going to be opportunities. So it's not about the opportunity that you have presented in front of you, it's about spreading that cheese, and that's how I've been saying it, right? It's more that we can get for our city, because we will be taxed at some point. And, Mr. President, I know I'm rambling, I normally don't ramble, I'm normally very consistent and concise, but I think I just want to point home that we don't even have a graveyard station anymore. I mean, let's think about that. Like, that's a tax that's going to come on our public, right, on the public space. What are we gonna do about that? And how can we, you know, use this as opportunities to really think about the value of our city and the leverage that we really have as a people in this city? And so, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate you allowing me some time today.
Thank you, Councilmember Young. The chair recognizes Councilman Ru Landau.
Thank you, Council President. I will be brief. This has been an extremely difficult month or so for so many of us, and what I am looking forward to in January is that we do have Donald Trump 2.0 coming, and that is very, very scary bad news. And so I introduced a resolution to hold a hearing to look at the city's readiness and commitment to protecting immigrant rights, LGBTQ+ rights, all marginalized communities, and also our commitment to protecting our reproductive freedom here in Philadelphia. Unfortunately, that hearing's not gonna happen until January, but I will say that we're gathering expert, community experts, experts from organizations, legal experts, to talk to us about not only the great laws that we already have on the books, but, you know, really hearing even from the administration about what we're willing to enforce, what needs to be made stronger, and where we have to go as a city. So I'm glad to have that hearing. I think it's gonna shed light on a lot of things, so we can make sure that we're sending the message to everybody in Philadelphia, that you're protected here in Philadelphia, and that we got your back. I know council does. Thank you so much.
That's it?
That's it? Oh, that's, I think, I could go on and on and on.
That completes our speeches for the day. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the Sergeant Armstaff, Chief Clerk, and their staff. I think Liz isn't in here, but I also want to thank our interim chief clerk, who will be made permanent after the new year. Let's give her and our team a round of applause. I also wanted to acknowledge my tech team to the left, let's give them a round of applause. All of them over here, making sure we're moving forward. I also want to acknowledge the Office of the Civil Affairs, I thank them as well for working with us. I also thank our Sheriff's Department, we thank them as well, as well as Philadelphia Finest, Philadelphia Police Department, I thank them as well. But most importantly, this is my first year as council president, so, you know, my word for the day is gratitude. And so I want to thank all the members of City Council for your support. I think, I know for a fact, as a body, we have accomplished much during this past year. I also believe that every member of this body works hard, day in and day out, to improve the quality of life of all Philadelphians here in the city of Philadelphia. We would never all agree on every single issue, because we're all individuals who have been sent here by our own constituencies, and we all have our own particular issues that we're focused on, but the common goal is working to improve the quality of life of all Philadelphians. And so I want to thank each and every ass-councilman for your hard work and your dedication. We walk and chew bubblegum, contrary to popular belief, and so just want to thank you for your hard work, your dedication. I want to say happy holidays to everyone, if I don't see you as well, Happy New Year, and this completes our first session of City Council our year. At this time, the chair recognizes my majority leader, my majority leader, I'm gonna give it to Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you very much for your leadership this year. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, at 10:00 AM.
It has a moving property second, the council stand adjourned in January 2023, 2:25 at 10:00 AM. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much.